7:01.
Weird, but that's weird.
No way on the clock on the wall.
We gotta set the time on that.
You all ready?
We're ready.
I'm ready, whatever.
Evening, everybody. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. First item this evening is going to be the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the fire of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, just as a rule.
Next item this evening is going to be public comment. And have one person on the sheet. So, sir, if you could please come forward, state your name and your address. And we'd like to limit public comment to five minutes, please.
My name's Ben Shutt from 1002 North Washington. I own a taxi. My concern tonight is the transportation network companies. They're running here in town, I think it's illegal. The state requires these people. The big question is whether the state controls them or the city controls them. State requires them to do prearranged rides, just like us. Trip logs have to be kept for a year. State requires us to do the same thing. Got to have many dollars in insurance. State requires us to do the same thing. State tells them they are a hailing company. State says we're a taxicab company. Now, my big problem is not with the company, the network companies that are here. I understand they got a right to work in Kansas. A big company, my big problem is with the drivers, the independent contractors that work in Junction City. We have ordinances in place for that. They're not being followed. They got, their drivers are responsible to do their own background checks. Can't have no sex offenders, no felonies. I know two sex offenders on the list that drive in this town every day. PD sends our background checks to the state to make sure we're legal. The difference between the two companies, the TNC companies and what we do is one does everything on text, we do things on a phone call. We got to stay up 24 hours a day. We're required to be here on call for the city at all times. They come and go as they please. That was a problem back in the 80s, I believe. And the former council meetings stopped it and put the laws into place. I've talked to a lot of people over the last year about this deal. Talked to the PD. Talked to city officials. Nothing. They say there's nothing they can do. Says it's a statute. But according to the service terms, when you get hired by these companies, it says you will not violate any law, statute, rule, permit, ordinance, or regulation. All appropriate licenses. You will have all appropriate licenses, the approvals, authority to provide transportation to riders in all jurisdictions in which you provide service. Sometimes when I call the city, I get a lot of, well, yeah, there's nothing we can do. Sometimes, like the other day, I got, talked to this nice gentleman down here today, matter of fact. He told me some other things. But I think the one that got me the most was a gentleman I talked to on Friday. Did a lot of calling, talked to you on Friday or before Friday. And I think that's how the gentleman on Friday talked to me, at the PD department. We talked about what was going on, talked about a lot of things. I never got anywhere. Yeah, there's nothing we can do. So, I started bringing up, every time I called the PD, why do I never get nothing done? I had people breaking out my windows, I had people tearing up my cars. Why nothing gets done? Why does Gabby sit right across the street with text for a ride, right across the street breaking the law? City manager say, talked to the captain, I think, police captain? There ain't no problem with that. It's all right. Chief of police, yeah, there's nothing wrong with that. They're good. So, I said, "Why? I just want an answer." He said, "Well, I really don't know why. But to tell you the truth, I think you've got the problem with one of the most powerful man in Junction City. Nobody wants a part of that." I hope we get something done tonight, man. I really do. I don't think it's right. I'm a taxpayer. I'm a businessman. Family's had this cab company in here since the 50s. And just to get, don't worry about it. Go on. See you later. Thanks for your time.
Thanks, sir.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
You kind of shot a shotgun blast out there. I've never seen an email from you. I've never spoken to you. I've never heard this conversation before.
Never hear the city council members where I went to the PD to uphold the laws like they were supposed to, and they don't. Your guys are my last, I don't know, I hope you guys have the backbone to do something. Instead of, like I was told this evening, don't worry about it, or you've got a problem with a powerful man in Junction. I don't have a problem, and he's a powerful, me. So, I don't, you know.
All men put their pants on the same way as the way I look at it. If you would, I'd like to know a little bit more about this, but we have a meeting to conduct here.
You bet.
So, at some point here, I hope we could get together and talk about this, or email the commission so we can all learn a little bit more. But right now, you're shooting a shotgun blast, and I have a very little bit of an idea what you're talking about. So, maybe somewhere.
I did talk about, we got some transportation, and it's been happening for a long time. Got transportation company, and they're sitting to do what they want. We have an ordinance, 620 something or other. He can probably, city manager probably.
Okay.
Check that off. But it's right in there. You will not pick up people for hire. You will not charge people. If you do, you're a taxicab. There's a fine set in place for it.
Are you referring to Uber?
One of them, and Lyft.
Okay.
And Gabby's, right down the street, right by the police department.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Next item this evening is going to be the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Nothing here.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five and zero. Next item this evening is going to be appointments, and it's going to be the consideration to appoint a person to serve as a city appointed, appointee to the Metropolitan Planning Commission, MPC, for an unexpired term.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, this is a term, of course, that's been held down by Commissioner -elect Underhill, and it goes until June, and it's before reappointment, of course, at that time. As of the writing, I had three people send notice to me. I'm Lawrence Perez, Michael Gray, and Sheila Burdette. And then today, also received, which I sent you this morning, an email from Phil Diesel Camp, showing interest. There's no magic on how we go about picking these or the process, so it's totally a commission decision.
Mr. Dinkle, I did not get a chance to finish reading that email on the fourth candidate, but I would like to consider taking time to read that. And I don't know about the rest of the Commissioners, but I'd like to read that fourth candidate that was sent to us, so we can read his bio. I kind of had something in my mind of who I'd like to see, but not considering all four. I'd like to wait on this one, and maybe we can do an email mail-in tomorrow, or no, we have to do a vote tonight, be it the next meeting.
I got it read. Did y'all get it read?
Yes.
I did not.
You want to take the time? Yeah, here.
I'll take that a minute.
It's on my phone.
I got it at 11 o'clock this morning.
Yep, written.
There you go.
But I was glad to see that some folks did step up and put their name in for that position. So, that really explains or shows a lot of folks in our community that care and want to be a part of it. So, all four of you that stepped up, do thank you for that.
We placed, placed a add in the paper, and I know J.C. Post also did a story, so the word got out there.
Good.
Hey, I think all four candidates demonstrate a fond love for this community and the direction that it's going and it's been going. They all have very good experience. I kind of lean toward Mr. Diesel Camp because of his background in major construction and those things that tie in with the EDC. Although, there's a lot of real estate.
MPC.
MPC. There's a lot of real estate dealings in that as well. I think his experience speaks for itself, and he's been a very vocal community member. And I think he's wanting to do good things for the community. Therefore, I would think that, in my opinion, Mr. Diesel Camp is a good candidate.
After reading this resume, I agree with you. Mr. Diesel Camp's got what we're looking for, and probably a little bit more. His qualifications stand out to me.
I think he's qualified. I have a concern that it doesn't seem like we have a lot of female representation in a lot of the boards that we have. So, when we get a qualified candidate, I think we need to, you know, give her due and give her a shot. I mean, she served on the CVB before, back when I was on there, and did a great job. Longtime Junction City resident, knows a ton about land use and, you know, things that that organization works with all the time.
That would be Sheila?
Yes. Perhaps we, you know, keep Mr. Diesel Camp's name around, and if something else came up, maybe, I mean, depending on what the board wants to do, but.
Because this appointment is going to finish up six months, and then.
And I'm assuming though, I mean, you'd hope that they could get reappointed. I mean, you know.
Right.
They did step up, and I mean, because I can't guarantee what a future city commission will do.
And I was impressed with Michael Gray stepping forward. Plus, the fact that he's been to almost every one of our meetings for the last six months or better. And he's done a lot for the community already. I really think Michael would be a good candidate.
We got fine candidates. And I was with you on that, too. Mr. Gray ran for city commission, and he took a very active interest in everything that the city does and continues to do.
Tough decision this evening.
They're all very good candidates. It's just, we need to weigh out where we want to go, and I do like the diversity piece of it. But I'm also looking for the longevity of the MPC and the items that they deal with. And so, I was looking for an experienced side on that side. So, they're all very good, absolutely.
Madam Mayor, will we take a vote on this?
Yes.
Or you can make a motion to appoint somebody, second, and go through the process, have a discussion first. I mean, ultimately, it's a commission decision.
I'd make a motion to appoint Michael Gray to the position of, to finish the term on the MPC.
I have a motion. Is there a second? Do I have any more motions for any other candidates?
I make a motion, we accept Mr. Diesel Camp as a candidate for the MPC.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Is there any more motions?
So, the vote was two to three.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. The vote was two to three on that. I apologize for not sharing that.
I move to appoint Sheila Burdette to the MPC.
Do you have a motion?
I'd second it.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries four and one, Sheila Burdette. Thank you. And thank you all four for stepping up and putting your name in. And please continue to look at ways to be involved and part of the community. Next item this evening is going to be the consideration to reappoint Graham Faust to the Economic Development Advisory Committee, EDC, for a two-year term.
Madam Mayor, last year, with the change in the master agreement, went to two-year terms, two appointments in the city, and Mark Parrish was appointed to a two-year term, Graham to a one-year term, and Graham would like to continue. He's presently president of the EDC, and I don't think he's ever missed a meeting. So, he represents the city well.
He's done a great job on the EDC since he's been on, and I would wholeheartedly recommend him.
Both of our EDC appointees very seldom miss a meeting. I wish everybody would show up like both of them.
Been very good.
And even when we had the three, they were all excellent.
Make a motion to reappoint Graham Faust to the EDC Advisory Committee.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five and zero. Thank you. Next item this evening is going to be under unfinished business, and that's to consider the memorandum of understanding regarding the amended and restated master agreement between the City of Junction City, Gary County, and the Junction City Area Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Dinkle.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, this was put on the agenda because it was tabled last meeting to this meeting. Lot of discussions, no action to take tonight. Lot of discussion last couple of weeks. Everybody didn't realize the master agreement we have, that since it expires now, since the county made notice, terminated December 31, that the EDC, if there's no new master agreement, the EDC would roll over to a, an ordinance that we have a resolution that the county has, which has numbers where it houses them or how it manages, and the number's different. I think it'd be real hassle. And nobody was aware, I mean, it's in the master agreement and the ordinance itself and the resolution. Our city attorney, Katie, has gone ahead and drafted up, the county submitted to, and the chamber's attorney, has submitted a MOU that was in the last packet, there's some minor tweaks to it. Katie has drafted a resolution, ordinance slash resolution, ordinance slash resolution for the county, to be considered to basically, it would basically, instead of defaulting to that ordinance that we'd run our own EDC for a year, it kicks it over to allow a one-year hiatus per se, or grace period for the EDC and the MAC, and then hopefully work out an agreement next year then, to carry on past 19.
Past 18.
Yeah, into 19, excuse me. Yeah.
But that would come before the next meeting.
Yeah, and we would need, and so she submitted that today, and hopefully get it back, and hopefully we'll have it to consider at the.
It's a joint county-city resolution, so it'd have to be approved by the county as well, because there's a default ordinance resolution that was passed in 2012 that says that if the master agreement terminates, you automatically revert back to an old joint city-county that isn't probably very workable anymore. But I think that was, frankly, I'd forgotten about it. But so had Mr. Opat. But I think we passed that at that time so that there would be something if the master agreement went away. So, this, what I'll bring to you at the next meeting, just basically trumps that automatic reversion to the old structure and says that you're approving the MOU, and you'll continue to work under the old structure for 2018 as you've already budgeted. And, but if the, if something isn't agreed to in 2018, then you'll revert back to the old structure. And you can even change that after next year, but it prevents an automatic reversion to the old structure. But this discussion came up not in time for that.
Right.
To be ready for this meeting.
Do you happen to know the changes? Because we're gonna have to have that opportunity to review and look.
Only changes, the county wants to work collaboratively in there, that we collaborate, collaboratively operate the EDC for a year.
But it says.
But it says.
Pursuant to the, basically, the terms of the master agreement.
Yeah, the pieces, items A and.
C.
A and C, yeah.
So, who does the EDC and the MAC fall under supervision-wise during this period?
The chamber.
I would argue the chamber.
Despite the word collaboratively.
Yeah. Well, because the two exhibits in the master agreement state that. And there, and it was their language that adopted those, would adopt those two exhibits.
The MOU would.
MOU would. Yeah, the MOU.
If you agree to that.
Yeah. Would adopt those exhibits.
Okay, you need no action tonight, obviously.
No action. You know.
You'll be at the next meeting.
I don't know where we'll go long-term with, you know, I don't know if there's a desire to split everything back up again, which then causes, any momentum you have right now, it would go away. Or how would you retain staff and office space and all those things? I think that's definitely worked out.
I have a little bit of an issue with three Commissioners coming off and working, making decisions that lasts a while.
Just a year.
Yeah.
And we're gonna be expected, and we're gonna be expected at this meeting to.
I understand. I know, it just bugs me that now we've got to do this. But it is what it is.
We've been working on this a long time. And knew it was gonna come down to the 11th hour.
Commissioner McAllister, and who represents on the chamber myself, I think we've been willing from day one or before that to talk about the issues.
Yeah. I understand your concerns. Really poorly done.
The other option, of course, is, is, you know, if we decide during the middle of next year, there's an out. I mean, we could get out of it. But it carries forward, because if not, if we do nothing on January 1, we have, we have to recreate a new EDC. We go to a 13-mayor board, there's a whole lot of changes. We'll have to find office space, we'll have to find staffing, anything momentum you have, there's no transition period even. It wouldn't be like, okay, we're gonna get out of this end of the year, so transition into it, and that's not been, you know. Okay. Be on next agenda.
And hopefully, like it.
I will get it to you as soon as I got it, something.
June, July, something like that.
Okay, thank you. Next item, we're gonna roll into new business. The first item up this evening is going to be the consideration of Resolution Number R. 2832, adjustment to the city employee manual to facilitate the reorganization of the Junction City Fire Department.
I'm gonna defer to you, Research Director Rivera and Chief Johnson.
Aye, good evening. We are working through a reorganization in the fire department, and we are transitioning away from the battalion chief position. And we needed to make some changes to the vacation and the sick leave to reflect that, that those positions will not be, we will not have those positions anymore. They're gonna go from 29, 20 hours work a year to 20, 80 a year. So, we needed to make sure that that was reflected on their vacation and sick leave.
Why are we transitioning away from the current organization?
Working towards being more efficient with the administrative functions of the department in the fire inspections, training, and operations. Right now, with the personnel, how we have them arranged, you figure that we have a fire inspector maybe two to three days a week that has a set group, and we have inspection issues every day. We have well over 1,100 businesses to inspect, and some of them haven't been inspected since 2009, 2010. We need someone who can develop a program and maintain that program daily. Business hours are Monday through Friday, eight to five for most of your businesses. Training, to coordinate training and get it coordinated, the people who work for the agencies that supply our training work Monday through Friday, eight to five. Operations, dealing with the vendors, getting our supplies, making sure everything is done, has to be done Monday through Friday, eight to five. Three battalion chiefs trying to do that, we end up duplicating efforts. So, by managing these in three separate solutions, we can become more efficient.
So, how does that be more efficient to take away the battalion? Or does that remain the same? How are you gonna organize for those battalion chiefs to now have less time?
Well, there won't be a battalion chief. There'll be one operations chief. He'll be responsible for making sure the three shifts have everything coordinated and ready to go. The station officers will be stepping up to take over the command of each station in their districts.
Okay.
So, instead of having a battalion chief managing two stations, each station will manage itself. And that way, we get to know our community better, our area better, and also the crews get to work more with the community instead of trying to pick up places where we've been, we've been lacking.
So, this operations chief would more or less be a deputy chief?
No, sir, it'd be operations.
Okay.
It's operations chief.
Okay.
He'll be responsible for things like maintenance, logistics, those type of things.
Are there losers and gainers in this reorganization?
I see the community winning, and I see the department winning by us being able to provide better services, being able to coordinate the services a whole lot better.
The annual regular salary will not change. Hourly rates will change because you go from 29, 20 to 20, 80. The gross amount of regular salary will not change. I've been advised by.
So, the salaries will not change even though you go into a different hourly structure?
They will go, instead of, if you're making $20 an hour, and I'm just using numbers here, and working 29, 20, multiply that out and divide it by 20, 80, and that'll be the new hourly. So, salary does not change. Gross, gross regular salary does not change.
So, less hours, same pay?
Correct, sir.
Except that.
On the annual basis, yes, sir.
Except, you know, right now, they're 24 on, 48 off. And, I mean, it changes what you do, too, because, you know, you'll have a full activated hours, you won't have your PT time, you won't have.
Just a weekly eight-to-five job.
Yeah, weekly eight-to-five job.
I think we have a pretty good resource on the commission that can probably give us two cents worth of here, but.
The wages, the annual wages is gonna stay the same. And it's the same thing that I went through when I went from being on a shift, when I took a 40-hour job. You know, they just, the salary transfers over to a 40-hour week, and your vacation and sick leave goes along with it. And from what the chief is saying, I agree with everything that he's just said. That was something that I struggled with when I was chief, is trying to coordinate three different shifts, inspectors on each shift, and trying to get stuff done. Or if you have one person, and that person's in charge of it, you're going to get a lot more work done, and it's going to be done more cohesively.
Because they're doing a five-day week instead of two.
Right.
Makes more sense.
Okay.
And this resolution, or this resolution just simply changes the handbook that as a 20, 80-hour, as a 2,000, 80-hour employee, they'll get the same sick leave another 2,000, 80-hour employee get, be it Jim or, you know, anybody that's still on a vacation sick leave. Now, our newer employees are all PTO employees, so they're a different game. So, they'll be exactly the same in what they accumulate as a police captain, or as a Jim Germa, I'm picking on Jim here, or, you know, anybody else that's a vacation sick leave employee.
Okay.
Chief, one thing I understand from this is I've heard training sometimes is a little different between the three shifts. This will standardize the training, it'll standardize the operations, and it gives us a fire marshal that does a little bit more and inspect fires, and the causes can actually go out and do inspections and conduct training in the community, correct?
Correct, sir.
I didn't read that anywhere. I just kind of made it up off the top of my head. Felt pretty good about that. Sounds good.
Shouldn't have shared that, Jim.
I'm reading, but it's not.
Should have kept that last picture. Should've kept that last part for yourself.
I think it's a good deal. Do something here.
I move to approve Resolution 2832.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
Nothing here.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item this evening is going to be the consideration of, of the vision, mission, and guiding principles statement for the City of Junction City. So I'll just lead into that. So I was approached by some citizens within our community inquiring what our city's mission statement, vision statement was. And I did visit with our city manager, we didn't have one, and we have a, a spot for it on our website. If you click on it, it comes up blank, there's nothing there. So Sarah Jackson had reached to me about it as well, and to, we formed a committee. And I'll just mention the committee was myself, Ms. Jackson, Mr. Schoenrock, Kendall Schoenrock, Mr. John Montgomery, Mr. Ken Mortensen, and Ms. Trish Gerald Donald. So we met and discussed it, and I invited a couple of the committee members to come tonight to discuss and go over that, what we came up with collectively as a team, so.
Kendall Schoenrock, 1209 McFarland Road. So we wanted to open this with the statement, the City of Junction City is a community rich in military history and pride. Our vision, a place to call home, Junction City is focused on improving the quality of life for all, where one can work, play, and thrive. Mission, city government will work collaboratively, but thoughtfully plan for the future with our citizens, businesses, and partners. From the guiding principles.
And I'm Sierra Jackson, Kendall's neighbor, 1231 McFarland Road. So we kind of talked about how to think of some things that would encompass a variety of things that citizens would want. So we are proposing to have these guiding principles, and of course, there would be discussion about what that would look like, a summary under each. But for now, we have to maintain a safe and secure environment, to promote public health and recreation living, to ensure fiscal responsibilities with quality leadership, create vibrant and diverse economy, to promote quality education, to create affordable housing, to improve and maintain infrastructures, and then encourage a sense of pride, community pride, and family values. And that's as far as we've gotten, and then, of course, wanted to get your thoughts on that, and just make these suggestions, and see as a commission where you wanted to go forward.
I'll tell you, I appreciate seeing this done. I don't know how long you planned, or how, how long you meant to do this, if you've been doing it like a week, a month, several months. I, I applaud the process. I went online and did some of my own with this, and I kinda had a little bit of fun with it, because these are the things I used to write for the military. And it's a great start. Are we, are we up for editing, or?
Oh, yes, you're right, this is a start. This is just to kinda get the ball rolling, and, you know, how you guys want to move forward. We had talked about opening it up for public comment after you guys made some suggestions, or it's just, it's a, a process. It's not what, we're not saying that we'd like you to adopt this, it's just to get the ball rolling.
Did, did we look at any other city, community?
We did.
Okay, okay.
We did.
All right, I, I like it. I think it's a good start, and we can, if we don't have anything, this is something we should put in place, and then we can continue to improve on it.
The living.
Yep.
I thank you, I appreciate you doing this.
Thank you for working on it.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're good with it for now, we can get it posted out on our.
So this is for the city, or the city government, or?
For the city.
Okay.
For Junction City.
I'm not sure about the create affordable housing, and I think that's up to the business and real estate people. I'm not sure if I wanna have that in there, that we were responsible to do that, but that is our responsibility, I have a little concern about that.
Okay, we can take that out for now, and.
Should be infrastructure, not infrastructures, everything else is good.
I questioned, to ensure fiscal responsibilities with quality leadership, what is the definition of quality leadership, and how do you quantify that? I, I, I kinda thought maybe that sentence probably ought to be somewhere along the line, to ensure fiscal responsibility and responsible leadership. I don't know how you quantify quality. If, if something was to go south, what does that do for your mission statement? You're, you're, you're not following it. Just, just a comment, I, I think it's a good start.
Just keep the first three words.
I, I just, I just think this is an excellent start to, to, to get the conversation started and see where we wanna go. And, and I know we can't do that here tonight, but I think the, the next three-fifths of the governing body that come on probably have a lot of input into this mission statement. Agreed? Okay.
Very good.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Thank you, Kendall.
Next item this evening is going to be considered, consider the revised bylaws of the Junction City Gary County Animal Shelter.
Commander Mayor, I'll start off there, maybe I wanna defer to Commissioner Ryan then. The Animal Shelter Board just, they have bylaws, as I understood, were kind of all over the board.
Yes.
And so they rewrote them, and the, the board has no problem with them, Katie and I reviewed them, and so see no issues.
And actually, the way the bylaws are written up is how we're operating now. And it will make it operate smoother in the future. I, I remember kind of first when I went over there, that things did not run smoothly. This is going to be an improvement for years to come.
This is a good written document. The only question I had was, all the terms are for one year. And, you know, I understand the elected positions, but can some of those folks be on there like for two years? Because it gives them continuity. If everyone comes on for a one-year term, there's very little continuity unless someone wants to extend and stay on the committee. And all I saw were one-year terms for everybody on there.
But are they staggered terms?
Not a one-year.
One-year.
But how long has some been on there? I get what you're saying, but.
Actually, the veterinarian who serves on that board has been there ever since this has started. So he's got like eight or nine years in.
Okay, that's good.
So they're not term limited?
No, there, there's no term limits on it. I've sat on it for the last three years.
Okay.
And I also, when I looked at this, I matched it up against, you have a joint agreement, and this follows the joint agreement. Maybe your bylaws before didn't, so this syncs up with your joint agreement as well.
Okay.
I think the only thing I kinda question to clean up would be that the Gary County Commissioner starts February 1 instead of January 1 like everybody else. Now that, now that all of our elections are together, shouldn't they also start January 1?
Well, we should start February 1.
Yeah, we start February 1 also.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
That, that was the first thing that I pointed out to Steve when they started working on it.
Okay.
You know, our animal shelter, I think we have a unique agreement in that it's run by the county, but, and they pay 40%, we pay 6%. I do believe, though, with the involvement they've gotten from the other.
Friends of animals.
Friends of animal group, we have an animal shelter that is MVA everywhere around us. I think as far as animal care, we're top, we're, we're totally on top. The shelter does an excellent job of providing a no, a nearly no-kill environment. I know other shelters do not. I mean, it's, it, I mean, this is working well, and we're providing, I think, some of the best care, and, and the board's hired great staff there, and, and, you know, it's humane, it's, it's very well done. I would think, I know one time there's some talk about, you know, getting the county out and going city, and I'm afraid the city would might wanna move more to, like, other cities around this half, and lose that, and I know the veterinarian on the board was very vocal about that. He says, we don't need to be a slaughterhouse, we need to be a care place, and, and they do that well. And I think that's something to be proud of.
Sure.
The will of the commission?
I would move to approve the bylaws as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
Nothing here.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you. Next item this evening is going to be the consideration of ordinance number G-1216, adoption of the 2018 water weight, water rate increases.
This is the annual increase for water rates as shown in your Junction City Water, Water and Wastewater Financial Business Plan that was adopted in 2014. So this is just the annual ordinance to make that happen. It's, it follows the original plan, and I have nothing else to present other than the memo I gave you that does that compare, side-by-side comparison for you.
You know, we're gonna get calls that rates going up, and I hear this all the time, and I think everybody's ever ran for a commission that's heard this as well. I did some quick check on our rates for water and sewer, city, state, and Kansas, and I hate to compare because I think there's two things here. Is we as a city, you as a city commission, are responsible for taking care of the water that we have here. If you live in Western Kansas, water rates get cheap because you have a whole lot of different water structure. If you live in Southeast Kansas, your water rates are a lot higher than this because you have surface water, and you gotta treat it as such. It all acts a little differently. Rates are all over the place, and so I, I, you know, I can pull a city out and says, we're cheaper than this one, and somebody says, but we're higher than this one. Yeah, you're right. I mean, you know, we treat the water we have, you know, when this was all started in place, and I, I wasn't here but looking back at the stuff, the financial stuff, you had hardly no cash balance in water and wastewater. And zero, yeah, and this has started rebuilding that. We now can, because we've had the water rate increase and, and the sewer increases, we now can do some projects. You know, here in a meeting or two, we're gonna talk about the Helen Park water line had to be changed there, which we now are losing tons of water when it breaks, and it could be a disaster some night.
Few times a year.
Now you're at least in a position where you can consider some of those things. We still got some things to pay for yet, but you don't have to be, six years ago, it had been, you had to borrow money, which you don't have, didn't have a lot of room then either. So I think it's moving in the right direction.
Well, the, the water rate structure that was done in the business plan was to fund Phase 1 only of the improvements for the water and wastewater plants. So the increases that you're being asked to adopt is to pay for the revolving loan fund that we borrowed money against, the 25 million we borrowed for the water and wastewater.
The most critical needs at the plants.
Yes, it was for the critical needs.
Got it.
When I explained that to a citizen that was, came and saw me earlier this week, at first he was very angry, and then he, then I, when I said, when I explained everything to him and showed him the report, and then showed him what we were doing and why we were doing it, he calmed down, and he says, oh, now I get it. But his main objective was, he said we hadn't been public enough with it. And I said, sir, we, we had this on our agenda for two years, almost every meeting, discussions and, and rediscussions, and more data, and more stuff. And I says, so if you weren't paying attention then, I'm sorry, but we'd had discussed this and had been very public about it. I says, we were on the radio about it, we were, talked to clubs about it, we talked everywhere about it. So I said, it was thoroughly discussed, so, and I showed him the chart and gave him a copy of it, so he'll know what his rates are gonna be for the next 10 year, or seven years.
And, you know, we all.
Unless.
hindsight's 2020, and we wish that past administrations 20, 30 years ago would have had an improvement fund. They never did.
They never did.
They barely covered costs. Actually, they didn't cover them at all, so we've had to adjust that since 2011 significantly. Yeah, it hurts. I wish we could do that over 30 years instead of 10. We can't. We need water.
And next year, we make both payments. This, this year, we only made a half a payment towards the loan. Next year, we start paying the full thing.
And you, you decided, no problem, other cities that are going through improvement projects, I know one where I grew up near, Hayes, we, the commissioner decided a 6% a year for a number of years. Other cities did like 40% one year, 40% the next, they just took the bandaid and ripped it off. I don't know which is better, I'm sure you had that discussion.
We did.
And, you know.
You felt phasing was better.
And I don't disagree.
Yep, by it at a time.
So we did make a commitment to this plan, and this is your annual increase for that, and so is the next ordinance for the wastewater. So I request adoption of ordinance G-1217. No, 1-6, excuse me, 1-6 for water, and the other one's wastewater.
I move to accept ordinance G-1216 as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, roll call.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Commissioner Landis?
Yes.
Mayor Mc, um, sorry, Mayor Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Commissioner Sands?
Yes.
Commissioner McAllister?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item this evening is going to be the consideration of ordinance number G-1217, adoption of the 2018 wastewater rate increases. Ms. Beatty?
Same scenario, only this is for the wastewater rate increase, as in the plan. This follows the plan exactly as stated in the plan, and I provided you the, the sheet that showed that. So we request adoption of G-1217 as adopted in the previous business plan.
Move to approve ordinance G-1217.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, roll call.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Landis?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Commissioner Sands?
Yes.
Commissioner McAllister?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next item this evening is going to be the consideration of the 2017 budget amendments. Mr. Dinkle?
This is the annual, each year, as stated, in order to not have a budget violation, statutory violation, we analyzed the budgets in November to make sure that it doesn't appear that we're going to have a code violation for the amount expended. This year, I mean, this is an annual thing, but this year, there's only two budgets that's impacted. The CDBG revolving loan fed had more than expected expenditures because we had to pay back the entire amount of the cash in that fund, and are paying that back quarterly according to the state and our agreement with them to dismantle the CDBG revolving loan fund. The capital improvement fund, when the budget was set in 2016, we, we were finalizing this project, the municipal court project, finalizing that all out, and we had not fully agreed that we were going to pursue anything with the plumbing project, or, and I don't even think it was really significant on the ra, radar at that point. We were waiting for this project to completely finish out so that we'd know if we had enough money to pursue the plumbing project. We did, we decided to move forward with the plumbing project, and therefore the expenses, there's, there's more than I budgeted. So we're requesting an amendment to that budget. That's the only two budgets that we are amending this year.
And the hearing will be at the next meeting, so you need to make a motion to publish for a hearing?
Yes.
No tax increases, no changing in finances, no asking people for more dollars.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries, thank you, 5-0. Next item this evening is going to be the consideration toward the Freeman Field Farm lease bid to double KS Farms incorporate an amount of $6,545 annually.
Commander Mayor, this is the Cranworth Smith Corporation. They have leased before, they, they lowered, the only, only one bid was received. It's about 77 acres, and of course, it's down a little, about $1,800 from, or $2,000, not $1,800, from a couple of years ago for the last time. And it's basically because beans are probably worth eight and a half bucks a bushel, whereas they were probably worth about 12 back then, so. One bid, and, and they do a super job working with us, and I have no problem with them.
Move to approve the award Freeman Field Farm lease bid to double KS Farms in the amount of $6,545 annually.
I have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you. Next item this evening is going to be the consideration to extend the water plant farm lease with divin' land and cattle incorporate. lease with dibbent land and cattle incorporate until December 31, 2018. Mr. Dinkle?
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, this lease for 12 acres right around the water plant. It was up this year, but due to the construction project, the contractor has worked with the, the tenant because he, they reamed crops and they settled out. And being that we have construction going on this year, as my recommendation, I've talked to Monty Dibbin as well, is just to extend the lease one more year and they're willing to do that. Till we get the project done, then if we want to bid it out, we can at that point in time. But with the process going on and, and they have a good relationship with the contractor and my recommendation is just don't mess with it and continue with it.
Move to approve the farm lease extension with dibbent land and cattle until December 31, 2018.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 5-0. Next item this evening is going to be the consideration to extend the Community Fisheries Assistance Program Agreement with the Kansas Wildlife and Parks from January 1 of 2018 to December 31, 2028.
Evening. Madam Mayor, Commissioners, what we have this evening is an extension on our current agreement with Kansas Wildlife and Parks for our Communities Fisheries Assistance Program. Kind of in a nutshell, Wildlife and Parks manages all our fisheries. They stalk the fish for us. In return, we prove about $700 and some dollars worth of in-kind work and then they in turn give us about $1,030 a year in actual cash payments to help fund them. Basically, back in 2016, we renewed this for a five-year term. Well, since then, the federal laws have changed slightly and there's been some new language added and that's why this has come up early instead of waiting until 2020. So basically, as it says, it's just some language changes, no, no changes in the terms of the agreement or anything. It'll just continue to operate as, as it has been.
Should we add Helen Park to this?
We will.
Okay.
Yes, that's an automatic thing. It's nothing we have to do here.
Okay.
That's handled through the local fisheries.
Thank you.
And I kind of made a comment in there too. We want to really stay on board with this with the Helen Park is because there is capital grant money available through this progress to, program to.
Move to approve the extension of the Community Fisheries Assistance Program Agreement with Kansas Wildlife and Parks.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Nothing here.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 5-0. Thank you. Next item this evening is going to be the Commissioner's comments and committee reports. So start out this evening with Commissioner Sands.
Good, just a second here. All right, not a bunch. Attended a veteran service organization for what the legislators, what we want our legislators to take forward. Something I'd never attended before, it was in Topeka. Very informative. The two things that I wanted to continue to go forward is the homeless sheltering and mental health assistance for veterans. One thing we did find out, and it's been available, there's two homeless shelters in Topeka. I believe Manhattan has something for veterans homeless, but this is strictly for the veterans. It's that, it operates at 100% capacity, but it's only filled 50% to capacity. So if you know some veterans that are looking for a place, it's right there at the VA Hospital. I think it's 80 beds. So what they were telling me is roughly, there's probably 40, 45 people there. So if you know a veteran who's out there, who's homeless, we need to spread the word. It's been out there for a while, but they actually opened my eyes when they said, "It's 100% functioning, it's 100% staff, we just don't have the veterans." And I know there's a lot of homeless veterans out there. So one of the things I was asking for is some of the assistance for our local community. Make sure we get something there. So this went to the state, which will also be taken to the federal. So hopefully, we'll get some, some resist, or some assistance with that. One other thing I wanted to say, and then this be it, I, I've seen a lot of Christmas spirit as I drive around the city. Oh my goodness, the city looks great. And that just means to say that folks are really into the Christmas spirits. I would ask that you recognize the 12 days of Christmas. You don't have to, but the first day of Christmas is December 25th. So if you continue to recognize the 12 days of Christmas, that'll be the first Sunday into the new year. Madam Mayor, that's everything I have. I had no committees to report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner McAllister?
Nothing to report, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
Nothing to report tonight.
Wow, y'all are so quiet. I know Vice Mayor Landis has got something. No, he doesn't.
Actually, Mr. Dinkle and I have met with a couple of local realtors recently and to talk about land bank. And I pitched my ideas to him about some different things. And what we're looking at doing is to create a request for proposal for the land bank to employ a listing agent, which would be basically a real estate firm. And they would be the ones that would actually do the marketing of the lots. There would be a fee to purchase the lot, which would be split between the listing agent and whoever's buying the, you know, the realtors buying the property. They would do all the legwork. The cities, we don't, city staff does not have time nor the expertise to do all that. They would manage a website, all the properties, all that stuff. I mean, we'll take care of the mowing still. But we need to do this now. So by the time spring occurs, hopefully builders start building again, we get these lots to move in. And, and we'll be pitching proposals on that here pretty soon to, to talk about. I think we're going to try to have a land bank meeting for the next meeting.
Okay, awesome.
Anyway.
Looking forward to it.
What else? Always check your, your lights, your Christmas lights before you put them up on the roof line, just in case they don't work. So, well, I have.
Have you had some experience with that?
Yeah, I've got a five-foot, foot gap above one of my windows, so. I was very pleased about that tonight after I'd been up there doing all that.
Chestnut Adams, okay.
It's wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank, that's all I have, thank you.
Wow, they just left a lot of room for me to talk.
No.
Just kidding.
You have two minutes.
I just wanted to point out, just share a couple of things briefly. So this Friday, just a little reminder, we have our event that's called Junction City Hometown Christmas. It's Friday, December the 8th from 5 to 8. And just a real quick synopsis of what all that's going to entail. So we're going to have free carriage rides, Santa's going to be at the Bartel. The, one of the churches in town is going to put a hot chocolate bar in there. The Junction City Police Department Community Involvement Unit is going to have a popcorn machine in there. At the Opera House itself, there will be five different performances of local choirs from our high school, I think Chapman, the Children's Choir and a couple of other, serve you half an hour. You'll get the opportunity to hear the carolers and they also have the opportunity to go walk in and sing in. Also, at 6:20, we'll be doing a donation of the toys that was raised for St. Jude's. We're going to be donating those toys at 6:20 to Children's Mercy. And the Junction City Arts Council will be doing their annual art walk. So they've got all the, a lot of the businesses downtown are on board. So we'll have our local artists, we'll have their art on display. So it is free and please, if you have nothing to do on Friday night, this is our first year to try this, to give just more ways of, you know, giving back to our community. And that's going to be hopefully something that we'll consider continuing to do in the future. There's a lot of people that helped to make that happen, so appreciate that. On Sunday, at the Opera House, Nutcracker, 2 o'clock. There may still be tickets for it, there may not be. Another really nice event. December the 16th, I'm just going to mention it, I'm not sure if Police Chief was, but it's Shop of the Cop, annual event that our police department and does a fantastic job with, and the sheriff's department, all the law enforcement. So that'll be on Saturday, December 16th. And the First Infantry Division has two free concerts coming up and those dates, I believe, was the 15th and the 16th, so Friday and Saturday night. And the last thing I'll mention briefly is, since I've been on the Military Affairs Council, I've worked on a program with our local Military Affairs as well as with Fort Riley, a program that's called Home Away From Home, Adopt a Soldier. We're going to kick that off tomorrow. So if you're interested in learning more about maybe adopting a brand-new soldier that just got assigned to Fort Riley, you can see me later with that. So that's a little bit of what I've had going on. So with that, I'll move right on. I talked real fast. No, just kidding, no I didn't.
A little more Leonard Skinner there.
That would shine down.
Mr. Dinkle?
Yes, ma'am.
Your turn.
Hey, thank you.
You're done.
Talking about, the comment I made beginning about Ubers and, and I did a lot of research last year and given to Katie and a paper that the City of Manhattan did about controlling Ubers. And I don't know of any cities in Kansas that can, there's some legislation, and I'll let Katie dig through that a little more.
Y'all have to look through.
And report back. But I understand the concerns, but, you know, somebody, two years ago, we had Uber in town, I go, "No, we don't." And they got their app out and says, "Look, they're in town." So they're everywhere. And I understand the concern, but it's just, they're here, trying to deal with them. Did get a contact with DSNO Electric. One of the concerns they have and ties with land bank a little bit, now this is not a land bank meeting, is the amount of trees we have growing on the land bank properties around what they have for underground structures. They are treated, they're probably going to treat some trees just because they don't want to mess up what they have in the ground. So it's those issues we're going to have and the sewer line issues and all those things down the road as well. A lot of good things, I mean, we talked about the Shop of the Cop. I took part with, at the Elks Club, they did their quarter mania on Sunday and they gave a check to the police department for $1,000 for Shop of the Cop. So Saturday, last Saturday and I think the week before, the radio, you know, radio station along with a couple of 4-H clubs did a collection for food. So a lot of good things in the community and remembering everybody this time of the year. And that is all I have this evening. Thank you.
Ms. Logan?
I don't have any.
Ms. Beatty?
Nothing.
Ms. Settles?
Nothing.
Police Chief Breezy?
Now play the music, now.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners and especially the citizens of Junction City, first of all, I want to tell you that I take offense to the comments from Mr. Pruitt about the police department not doing their job when he says they've called and we have not responded. That is not true. There's any call that the police department gets, we respond 24/7, 365 days a year. And in the year and a half I've been chief, I've never had a conversation with Mr. Pruitt about any of his competitors or any problems in this community. In reference to his comments about a competitor not being licensed, that is true. That competitor does not have to be licensed. We fully investigated that person two to three years ago over a two-month period. They were in compliance with our ordinances and state law. And if anybody has problems with the police department, please contact me. Don't just come in and say, "I talked to an officer and they didn't take them serious." Thanks for listening. Have a good day.
Thank you. Bar Chief Johnson? Thank you. Mr. Ibera? Mr. Lazir? Mr. Peterson?